Welcome, everybody. Welcome to the Fall Town Meeting. I'm your host, Sean Keely, the moderator. And we have reached the time of the meeting and we have attained a quorum. That's wonderful. So if everybody could please rise and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get to the articles, just a couple of Housekeeping matters. As we often do, we remember the people who we've lost since we last met as a town. So I'd like to remember Arthur P. Brazil Sr., Dean F. Crowen, Chief Rusty King, Russell Rusty King, and John Norton. We could just have a moment of silence. Thank you. And I think this is a first for the in memoriam section of the program. The first time we've had an animal to remember. But just recently, the police department lost Lucy, which was the department's first comfort dog. Very sad for the department. So we remember Lucy and remember her family. Before we get going any further, I've often been reminded at the end of town meeting to introduce people on stage. For those of you who have not been to town meeting before, it's been a long time. As I said, I'm the moderator. And to my left is the Finance Committee. Could you guys just introduce yourselves?
Steve Amico.
Pepper Sam Lucia.
Aaron Bar.
Kevin Sullivan.
And I'd just point out that Kevin Sullivan has returned. He's been away for over a year, serving our country in Africa. And if the Select Board could introduce from the side of the Select Board.
Laura Fitzgerald-Kant.
Joey.
Andy O.
Anne Rain.
David George.
Thank you very much. So one of the things that we have to take care of as well is for me to point out that the rules for tonight's town meeting will be governed by Town Meeting Time, which is the guide for town moderators. And I would also like to start with a vote to give me the ability to declare a quantum of vote. That is, a couple of the votes tonight require a nine-tenths or a two-thirds vote. We don't know. Sometimes it's unanimous. Sometimes we don't get a unanimous vote, which makes it difficult to determine. But if I would make a motion that the town meeting allow me to determine the quantum of the vote by voice votes, if somebody disagrees with me, and I've been wrong before, we'll proceed to a counted vote. But it just saves a little bit of time. So do I have a second? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Also, a very common question, how much money do we have? It's a great question. So here are the fund balances to begin the evening. The ambulance fund balance has $1,187,469.35. Camp Kwanis retained earnings fund has $195,179.65. In free cash, we have $2,267,948. In the ARPA NEU balance, we have $172,749. In the CPC housing reserve, we have $373,823. And in the water surplus estimate, we have, well, it's not an estimate, it's the water surplus fund, we have $1,426,920.1. So we'll proceed with Article 1. I move the town transfer the vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $1,378.41 to pay unpaid bills from prior fiscal year as printed in the special town meeting warrant. And I would note that this has a nine-tenths majority vote to pass. Any questions or comments on Article 1? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 1 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by the required nine-tenths majority. Article 2. I move the town vote to amend the wage and personnel bylaws Article 2-12, classification and compensation by deleting Sections 11A to 11E in its entirety and inserting the new Sections A-11E as printed in the warrant. Seconded. Any questions or concerns? Mr. Young, if you could come to the microphone. And I'd please ask, anybody coming to the microphone to just state their name and their street? I know many of you. Sometimes I forget to introduce yourself.
Bruce Dye Young, 594 Indian Head Street. I think it'd be a good idea to explain the Section G of Section 11A, Professional Positions, the increase in the town planner from 45 to 90, to 70 to 105, only because voting on that has a direct effect on Article 3, First Section, Article 3, to raise his salary to 12,000, and also has an indirect effect on at least one other article in the county law. So it'd be a good idea if they explained in detail the employment agreement that they made with him.
So we'll ask the Town Administrator Lisa Green to come on.
Lisa Green, Town Administrator. So we were faced with a challenge earlier where we could hire a town planner, De Frey who resigned from the position. He was unfortunately pursued by another community who offered him a higher salary, which he originally turned down, but then they came back to him with another salary, higher salary, that he accepted. Based on all of the really crucial projects that he has been so critical in helping us plan and the grants that he's helped us get, the in compliance with regulations that have come out, he has drafted all of these type of plans that the state has looked very favorably on the town. So we came together with the Select Board and the Planning Board and offered Mr. De Frey a higher salary to keep him here in Hanson. And basically, line G represents the increase of salary. And actually, we actually offered him a higher salary that he did not accept. He accepted a lower salary because he's aware of the budget of the town and didn't want to put us in a predicament. But losing him would have been devastating for the town. He is a very good grant writer for the town, and he has succeeded in getting us almost a half a million dollars in grants that are going to help us with pedestrian improvements for our commuter rail and many, many other projects for the town. So losing him was not really an option. We needed to keep this gentleman as an employee.
And I would just note that this is not an appropriation. This is just setting the range for the potential salary. Ms. Kemp.
And that's actually what I was going to say, which is, Mr. De Frey and his superb qualities aside, we know that by doing a competitive analysis, we were way outside of what surrounding towns of similar demographics were paying us. So even if Mr. De Frey were to leave, we would need to increase the salary line. So it's really above and beyond just the individual in question.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 2 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 2 is adopted. Article 3. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $114,000 to supplement appropriations previously voted at the annual town meeting of May 2023 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, for various town departments as printed in the warrant. Do I have a second? I'll just read out, as we do with the budget, the three lines. If anybody has an objection to any of the three, just say hold. Line 1. Line 1 is held. Line 2. Line 2 is held. Line 3. Line 3 is accepted. Any questions or comments on line 1? Yes, Mr. Young.
It's my understanding that the $12,000 represents an immediate $7,000 increase in salary that was granted to the town planner, effective, retroactive to July 1, which he's currently receiving. And the other $5,000, they couldn't give him immediately because we had to just vote the increase on line, on the town planner line of the classification and compensation by law adjustment. My only question is, how were they able to give him an immediate $7,000 increase in his pay, retroactive to July 1, if the town meeting in May only approved $83,000 for his salary for fiscal July 1 through June 30 of the current year? Knowing that Section 70 of the Classification Compensation Bylaw basically says that you can't grant additional salary adjustments unless that department has included that in their budget which was voted in May, which they didn't include the additional $7,000 in the budget. Where is that current $7,000 coming from to pay the town, to pay the town planner, the additional $7,000 that he's currently getting? That's my question.
Thank you. If we could have the Town Administrator. Kate Federoff, our Town Accountant.
It's my understanding that the town planner has been paid only the incremental increase from his original salary to the top end of the approved scale that was approved by the May town meeting, so up to that original $90,000. And then this makeup payment is going to be, is it retroactive? Yes, it will be retroactive, which is permitted by, and I don't have the section in Chapter 44 that it's permitted by, but in Chapter 44, there's a section which says you can give a retroactive payment if approved by town meeting all the way back to the fiscal year before the year you're in. So you could even give it back further, which they're not intending on doing, but it's permitted by law. But they maintained the payment made to him within the original scale, and now they're looking, since the scale's been increased, to retroactively pay it.
I'm sorry, Mr. Young. If we misunderstood, do you want to restate your question?
We only approved $83,000 at the town meeting in May for this current fiscal year we're in, okay? Therefore, where did the $7,000 immediate increase that we're currently paying him in this fiscal year come from, bringing him up to the $90,000? I realized that we approved the Classification Compensation Bylaw the year before to have the high end of $90,000, but that's not money that's appropriated. That's just the high end of what the salary scale is. Where is that money coming from? Maybe the Town Accountant can answer that question.
Like any shortfall in a budget? If there's a shortfall in the budget and they didn't have enough money, if they didn't have the $7,000 additional dollars at the end of the fiscal year, they would have to lay him off.
That's correct. That's exactly the point I made, and that's in violation of Section 70 of the Classification and Compensation Bylaw. You cannot do that.
No. What that section of the bylaw provides is that there's a scale, and you can pay a person a salary within that scale and subject to appropriation. And like any other budget that routinely gets supplemented either in May or in the fall, you live with the consequences of the appropriation. So you might have had to lay employees off if this town meeting does not appropriate the firms.
That's not what the bylaw says.
So we'll take these lines individually. All those in favor of accepting line 1 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Line 1 is accepted. Any questions or concerns about line 2? Mr. Malice.
So I was just curious about the transportation cost for one student at Norfolk Agricultural High School. Bristol Aggie and Norfolk Aggie, as I'll call them for short, are essentially the same distance. Why is it costing double for one student to go to Norfolk Aggie but two to go to Bristol for half the price, essentially?
Ms. Green.
Yes, on line 2. Unfortunately, the town was faced with a very unfortunate circumstance where a student was removed from their residence by DCF and placed in another residence in another town. Under the law, the town is required to provide transportation for that student from the town that they are placed to the school that they are attending. We cannot require the student to change schools. The DCF state does not allow that, and we are required to pay this amount until another resolution is presented. At this point, it has not happened. So we are responsible for 180 days of transportation for the student.
Mr. Malice.
Who is the transportation that's needed specified? Like, he has to use a certain transportation? Or can we, as a town, choose which transportation we use to get to school for those 180 days? I feel like I could Uber every day for less than $63,000.
So the problem is, when you're transporting students, they have to fall under certain criteria under the law, and it's a matter of availability of somebody that can transport this student from the town that they are placed to the school. So it was a matter of availability. We really didn't have a lot of choices out there for people who could provide this transportation. We need to make sure the transportation is vetted through the school system, that they have gone through all the background checks and processes before they're allowed to transport a student.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or concerns on line 2? Seeing none. All those in favor of accepting line 2 signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Line 2 is accepted. So now we'll move to the main motion consisting of the three lines of Article 3. Any questions or concerns about the whole kit and kaboodle? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 3 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 3 is adopted. Article 4. I move the town vote to borrow from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust or otherwise the sum of $500,000 for the purpose of financing the following water pollution abatement facility projects, repair, replacement, and/or upgrade of septic systems pursuant to agreements with the Board of Health and residential property owners, including, without limitations, all costs thereof as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws or otherwise. Seconded. This requires a two-thirds vote. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of adopting Article 4 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by the required two-thirds vote. Article 4 is adopted. Article 5. I move the town vote to transfer $8,951.45 from free cash to fund the Plymouth County outreach, to fund prevention, harm reduction, treatment, and recovery programs as further detailed in the Massachusetts State Subdivision Agreement for statewide opioid settlements. Seconded. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 5 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 5 is adopted. Article 6. I move the town vote to transfer $17,995 from free cash for the first-year payment of lease purchase financing agreement authorized by the town under General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 21(c), for the lease of body worn cameras, associated software, and support equipment, a capital asset, the improvement of which may be financed by the issuance of debt under General Law, Chapter 44. Do I have a second? Seconded. This also requires a two-thirds vote. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 6 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by the required two-thirds vote. We're on Article 7, correct? Thank you. Article 7. I move the town vote to amend the Town of Hanson general bylaws, Part 4, enforcement by adding the following new subsection, 3-17, to Section 3, fire schedule, as listed in the warrant. Seconded. Any questions or concerns about Article 7? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 7 is adopted. Article 8. I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $73,560 from free cash to fund the overtime costs necessary to maintain adequate staffing levels at the fire department for fiscal year 2024. Seconded. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 8 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 8 is adopted. Article 9. I move the town vote to transfer $395,000 from the ambulance account to purchase and equip an ambulance. Seconded. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 9 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 9 is adopted. Article 10. I move the town vote to transfer $20,000 from the ambulance account to pay for ambulance billing. Seconded. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 10 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 10 is adopted. Article 11. I move the town vote to transfer $536 from free cash to Article 6 of the October 2013 special town meeting. I feel like I've been missing something. I haven't been reading the explanations. Is this... Just wanted to make sure. Any questions or concerns about Article 11? All those in favor of Article 11 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 11 is adopted. Article 12. I move the town vote to transfer from American Rescue Plan Act funds, ARPA, the sum of $28,000 and from free cash, the sum of $15,457 to install generator adapters to the Hanson Fire and Police Stations. Seconded. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 12 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 13 is adopted. Article 14. That was Article 12? The majority being with the ayes. Article 12 is adopted. Article 13. I move the town vote to transfer $11,765 from water surplus to install generator adapters to the Hanson Water Department well field. Seconded. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 13 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 13 is adopted. Article 14. I move the town vote to appropriate transfer $55,000 from the Community Preservation, Community Housing Reserve to fund exterior repairs of the Hanson group home located at 53 West Washington Street Hanson, further identified as assessors map lot number 92-0-20A-0, and to place a permanent deed restriction on said property as presented to town meeting and recommended by the Community Preservation Committee as printed in the warrant. Seconded. Any questions or concerns? Yes, ma'am. If you could come to the microphone, please.
Corrine Tofado Winslow-Drag. I thought that these group-type homes, there are a few of them in the town of Hanson, had to raise the money themselves, not go to other committees in town. Wouldn't this fall under something like the Housing Authority? I'm not quite sure how everything works, but I guess I didn't think that the CPC would be taking care of this.
Mr. Kemp, do you want to address that?
John Kent Kemp, A3 Bay State Circle. I think the answer to that question would best be served by speaking to the Housing Authority. They're supposed to approve this project, and I don't believe they have, so if they could speak to that, that would be very...
Do we have someone from the Housing Authority here? Could you come to the microphone?
At this time, the Housing Authority has no comment on that. We don't know enough about it.
All right. Thank you. Actually, if we could have Town Council address the question, I think she may have
So initially, I had some concern with this article because there's a restriction in the CPA that says that you can't use CPA funds for affordable housing to rehabilitate existing projects that weren't purchased through CPA funds. And in digging a little bit further, I was provided some guidance from DCHD. In any event, the state entity that manages these type of affordable housing projects. And what they drew a distinction between was rehabilitation versus preservation. And in that guidance, it described what was appropriate and inappropriate within the purview of the law. And these improvements to the project, like the roof, are considered preservation. Now, the policy question is up to town meeting as to how they spend their CPA funds, but in terms of being legally compliant with the Community Preservation Act, it is compliant.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Melinda Smith, West Washington Street. I don't know if I'm allowed to ask this, but did we fund the brand-new septic system that went in there? but did we fund the brand new septic system that won in there last year? And if we didn't, then why are we being asked to fund this? Why aren't they funding it themselves?
As far as I am aware, the town did not fund the septic system. I think the way that this worked was that the folks who run that home applied, as people are able to do, through community preservation, and there was a majority vote of community preservation to support that. I think at the time that the vote was taken, they believed that the Housing Authority had taken a vote on it and supported the project. But I believe since that time, it's been discovered that there was no vote of the Housing Authority to support that project. I don't, I can't speak to whether community preservation would have still supported that or not, because we can't go back in time. I can tell you my, I was the dissenting vote on board, and it is not that I do not support affordable housing, but I believe that community preservating... look, if our needle had been moved on our own affordable housing that we had created in town, I'd have no problem funding a private entity to fix up their house. But since our needle has not been moved, and we need that money desperately with the price of housing being what it is, to actually create new housing in town, I vote a no. So I'm just one person, though.
So can this whole thing be held until the Housing Authority reviews it and...
Somebody would have, somebody would have to make a motion to pass over the article until the next town meeting.
So can we pass it over then?
So you're making a motion?
Yep.
Motion is... pardon me? You can speak to the motion, yes.
And... Hi, my name is Pepper Samletia, West Washington Street, speaking on my own behalf, not the finance committees. Did you have something else to say?
It was just brought to my attention, there may be a conflict. I don't know if you want to...
I'm simply going to state that there are a lot of different affordable housing project, programs in the state that target different populations. Not all of what happens in the town of Hanson with regard to affordable housing is within the purview of the Housing Authority. So it may not even be within the realm of the Housing Authority to provide a letter or approve or disapprove this particular expenditure. So I'm not the chair of the Housing Authority. I'm not on the Housing Authority. In full disclosure, my wife serves on the Housing Authority. But I just simply want to raise the fact that just because there isn't a letter from the Housing Authority, doesn't mean that this isn't an appropriate use of CPC funding.
Mr. Kellitt.
Hi. I'd just like to say, I disagree with Pepper. It's my understanding that CPC is designed so that if money's expended under a specific bucket, like the Housing Authority bucket, it would need approval.
Mr. Malisi.
So I was, I was under the impression, the camp applied for multiple CPC funds last year, or last town meeting. I was under the impression that you couldn't use CPC funds to, for regular maintenance or things like a roof, like along those lines for the CPC guidelines. Is that not the case for this particular project? Or was it the case for us at the camp?
I believe the...
This is for housing. So it's, it would be, there's a matrix that gives permitted uses, and as our town council indicated, she had had some questions, but it definitely, in her view, met the requirement under the uses. So housing is different than like a town building, rehabilitating, rehabilitating a town building.
Are we also, are we also going to be in the business of providing fifty-five thousand dollars to private organizations?
I only told you where I stand on it, but yes.
If you guys could direct all your comments through me, please. Yes, ma'am.
No offense to anyone. I know a lot of people here, and I totally support affordable housing. But it seems that the Housing Authority doesn't know what's going on, and I agree that the article should be tabled, and they can meet and discuss the article.
Right. So the motion before the town meeting is to table Article Fourteen. Oh, do we have another?
Yes.
Are you a visitor?
Yes, ma'am.
Are, in what capacity will you be speaking to this?
On behalf of the organization at home, that we talk.
All right. Yes, please briefly.
Thank you. My name is Noel Hemphries, and I work for Naval Works Housing Solutions. So we've met with the CPC committee, I want to say, four or five different times over the last year. Naval Works, for those of you who don't know, is, while it's private, it is a nonprofit organization that works in at least seventy communities on the South Shore. Just to give you a sense, it's not your sort of typical private when we're talking that way. The group home was a home that we, we've merged in the last few years with another nonprofit out of Kingston. That nonprofit built the group home back in nineteen nineties. The original program that it was funded under was a HUD program, that as the years went on, we were severely restricted with rents. And as most people know, expenses, utilities, and everything else have increased over time. And what's happened is because we're limited on rents there, every year we just, you're losing money. So to answer the question, I know there's a woman here, about the septic, one hundred percent, Naval Works actually fronted the fifty-three thousand dollars to pay for that. In addition, we've also covered almost two hundred thousand dollars in operating expenses over time. So this project, we feel, when we went in, was totally in compliance after reviewing the state rules from DHCD, now known as, it's EOHLC, but it's the State Housing Agency. And so, being in compliance or feeling that we were in compliance, we submitted an application, went through the process, explained why we felt it complied, and the roofing and the siding was where we were looking for. We're actually looking to spend about six hundred grand on the property in total between renovations and refinancing it. So it's not necessarily something where it's like going into the hands of a private developer. The, I think the key thing to focus on here is that the affordability right now will run out in 2032 on that project. If we can do this transaction in full, it will extend the affordability indefinitely, which means it stays on the town's affordable housing. So right now, for folks who know, you have to maintain ten percent of affordable housing on the state inventory. And I think Hanson is a little, maybe a little bit shy of it now, but what this does is it preserves those eight units for the future, so that those remain on. And what that does is ends up making like forty Bs and things like that a little more friendly, forty Bs a little harder in the future. So you don't really want to lose those eight units. But when you have folks like us who really are a partner, Naval Works does a lot of good in the state, and we supply a ton of resources to a lot of residents within the towns, both here in Hanson and beyond. So I think that is pretty much what I have got.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kellitt, and then we'll go to Mr. Hayes, and then we'll...
So I just wanted to point out to everyone, everyone keeps talking about DCHS and the fact that they say that it's okay. And that's all right. That's their opinion. But the opinion of the coalition in many communities who voted against this feels that that's not correct, right? And I think there needs to be some legislative changes at the state level, if this is the direction that, you know, CPC wants to go. But at this point, I really don't think that it's legal. So it's just...
Mr. Campbell. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hayes, you've been waiting. Mr. Campbell, Mr. Campbell.
How are you doing? Joe Campbell, Woodbine Avenue. I'm also the chair of the planning board. To the representative that's here from NHS, can you explain the deed restriction that you're looking to put on the property? And just for the jumbo public that are here this evening, Mr. Moderator, Hanson's at about four percent for affordable housing. We are far away from the ten percent. So we've got a lot of work to do to get anywhere near ten percent where it's going to help us with the forty Bs.
Yeah, thank you. So the deed restriction, it basically would take, so the units, there's eight units, it's affordable at thirty percent of area median income, so it's pretty low, right? Extremely low income individuals that are disabled. By putting on this deed restriction, it will take the affordability beyond 2032, and it will be indefinite, so it'll just go in perpetuity, meaning that it will always carry with it that restriction. Does that answer? I mean, it's pretty much, it's like, put on by the state, it ensures that it's affordable for those years to come, rather than, let's say, in 2032, we decide we can't do this anymore. Because I'll tell, like, the amount of money we're putting in to save this, it's extremely difficult. And again, it's something we essentially inherited when we merged with the other nonprofit. We're just doing our best to basically try to shore it up so that we can preserve it, and we can preserve its affordability. And one other note I just want to make was the state agency, the EOHLC, they require community support, and it's typically in the form of funding. So they're actually going out to decide tomorrow to review it for the other renovate, all of the renovations we're doing. CPA funds are what they consider local support on a project like this. And ultimately, it is at the discretion of the CPC committee, before town meeting anyways, you know, so they recommend it. And I just want to point out, I don't believe there have been housing funds spent from the committee, and John could obviously talk to that, but I think it's important to note that this is actually a small amount of the total.
All right. Mr. Hayes?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, I have a question for everybody. Just want to remind everyone here, CPC, CPC or CPA funds are tax dollars that the residents of the town of Hanson pay. Does fifty-three West Washington Street get a further tax break because it's owned by a nonprofit organization?
I don't see the town assessor. Oh, our town assessor is here. I'm sorry, I should have seen you.
Hi, Lee Gamache. They pay a pilot tax, which is a payment in lieu of taxes, usually runs about eight hundred, eight fifty, roughly around there, is what their tax liability is.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Mr. Hayes?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Just another reminder, nonprofit organizations do wonderful things, but they have paid employees in nonprofit organizations. It's not people working for free. They have employees that are paid, say, president or however it comes down. People are paid to do this, and that's how it ends up as a nonprofit, under nonprofit status. So keep that in mind when you're talking about voting on this particular article.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Diane Collins, seven sixty-seven Pleasant Street, and I'm also a member of the CPC. And unfortunately, I wasn't there when this thing was voted on. I do want to remind people that, as Mrs. Kellitt stated, we do want to move the needle on housing, but the spirit of the CPC law does say we really need to build it from the ground up. So I'm hoping that we can work with other companies and companies to build housing that's affordable in our community from the ground up. And in speaking with the state head of the CPC, Stuart Saggar, that really was the spirit of the law. But because the law is so new, there haven't been a lot of projects in various towns that have been built from the ground up and, for lack of better phrasing, deteriorated enough to warrant coming back to CPC for funding to rehab them or preserve them.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Malisi.
Just doing a quick Google search. Naval Housing Solutions made one hundred and thirty-eight million dollars last year in total revenue.
Well, yeah, Mr. Malisi...
Also two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the CEO to get paid, so...
Well, I'm not sure that's relevant to the, either the motion to table or anything else. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. We have a motion to table Article Fourteen. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose nay.
Nay.
In the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it, and Article Fourteen is tabled. Would any... All right. Article Fifteen. I move the town vote to approve an amendment of the Hanson General Personnel Classification and Compensation Bylaw, Vacation Leave, Section Twelve DG, by striking the section in its entirety and inserting in place Section Twelve DG as printed in the warrant. Second, any questions or concerns about Article Fifteen? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Fifteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose nay. The ayes have it. Article Fifteen is adopted. Article Sixteen. I move the town vote to approve an amendment of the Hanson General Personnel Classification and Compensation Bylaw, Vacation Leave, Section Twelve DA seven, by striking the section in its entirety and inserting in place Section Twelve DA seven as printed in the warrant. Second, any questions or concerns on Article Sixteen? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Sixteen signify by saying aye. Oh, did I miss someone? Mr. Young, do you want to come to the microphone?
Can somebody read what the actual, the actual verbiage of how that particular general law reads right now? Because this really is not, not the way, I want to know how it reads right now, so everybody knows how it reads right now.
Thank you. Your screen?
So the verbiage right now, language as it reads in the bylaw, "The Board of Selectmen or Town Administrator shall be permitted to authorize granting a newly hired employee up to fifteen days of vacation leave based on prior experience in a similar position." Employees granted additional vacation leave based on prior experience shall not have their vacation leave increased until they have five years of continuous service for the town of Hanson, at which time they may be granted additional vacation leave, I'm sorry, additional days of vacation leave. So the proposed language for the change is, "The Wage and Personnel Board and Select Board shall be permitted to authorize granting a newly hired employee up to fifteen days of vacation leave. Employees granted additional vacation leave based on prior experience shall not have their vacation leave increased until they have five years of continuous service for the town of Hanson, at which time they may be granted additional days of vacation leave. In addition, for the purpose of employee retention, the Wage and Personnel Board and Select Board shall be permitted to authorize granting existing employees up to an additional five days of vacation leave, only if the Wage and Personnel Board and Select Board deems the granting of said additional vacation days to be in the best interest of the town. The decision of the Wage and Personnel Board and Select Board shall be final and not subject to any grievance proceeding."
Okay, thank you.
Did you have any other questions or comments?
No, only, I'm not voting for this article for one reason, one reason only, I think it will open the floodgates of people wanting, wanting, wanting to have that right. And I can't, I couldn't find a, a union contract where this clause, this clause is, is there as well. So I think it will open the floodgates for the labor unions who don't have this to want it in the next, in the next labor group. That's, that's the reason I'm voting against it.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Sixteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article Sixteen is adopted. Article Seventeen. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash, three hundred and three thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents, to be expended for capital equipment as printed in the warrant for the regional, for the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District. One of the, oh, do I have a second? And by way of explanation, these numbers are different than the informational warrant. There's been some changes to the various lines. So I would like to give you the various lines, one through four, as to how that number, three hundred and three thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents... as to how that number, $303,136.58, was arrived at. So for line one, the number should be $34,628.40. For line two, $73,334.29. For line three, $131,470. And line four, $63,703.89. Should I take this line by line or would people like to just discuss it as a whole?
As a whole.
As a whole, excellent. Any questions or concerns on Article 17? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 17 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 17 is adopted. Article eight. I move the town vote to transfer from American Rescue Plan Act, otherwise known as ARPA, $125,000 for the capital equipment projects as printed in the warrant for Hanson Parks and Fields to convert the infield dirt to native premium infield mix. Second, any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 18 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, Article 18 is adopted. Article 19. Article 19. I move the town vote to amend general bylaw Article 2-9 Financial, Section 3E, authorize revolving funds to add the Conservation Mitigation Revolving Fund to the table as printed in the warrant. Second. I would note, there is one change from the informational warrant. Under recommendations, it has the Finance Committee not recommending one to four. It should have been printed, not recommended four to one. I don't really think it makes much difference, just to mention it. Any questions or concerns about Article 19? Ms. Murray?
Kathleen Murray. I'm concerned about this because it concerns people that, I would assume probably ninety some of them have an issue, have to do a new septic system, and have a wetlands issue, they're within 50 feet of the wetlands. It almost seems punitive that you want them to then buy bushes that the conservation can plant elsewhere because they can no longer fit it on their own property. I think this was really going to affect people in Mon Ponset and around the lakes, off of Brook Street, off the Lakeside Road. In full disclosure, I am in real estate and I've sold lots of properties in Hanson. And septic's are a huge problem for many of our older existing homes. And some of the lots just don't have much room. Thus, the septic systems get very expensive. And I think, I looked up, there is a revolving fund already for wetlands protection. And at the end of the year 2022, there was $77,900 in that fund. I would recommend that the town pass over this, thank you.
We have a motion to pass over, do we have a second?
A second.
A second. Mr. Clemmons?
I would like to just correct some assumptions that are being made here. This is not aimed at people who need to do changes in septic systems. There's a wide variety of projects that come into a conservation and sometimes lots are very small. Sometimes resources like trees and so on are proposed to be destroyed, but there's no way to replace them because the property is not very large. We think it would be wise to enable the town to maintain its environmental quality by giving us another tool to facilitate the approval of projects without simply getting rid of environmental issues here and there and saying it's okay to retire. We already do have examples of where we have required as a special condition that mitigation be done on another site. But when that happens, the funds to make it happen have to be approved as a gift to the Board of Select Board and it's a very tedious thing. This is a tool that will streamline what we're already doing. Not lots of it, but in certain cases, and it will make it more fair, we think, to people who apply for a project. Not every project can be approved, but many of them should. This will make it easier to approve things that should be approved.
Ms. Murray?
Well, my question would be if someone needs a septic system on a small lot and they have to get a septic loan through the town and now the conservation is asking for more money to replace bushes. Sure, the conservation can change them up more quickly by using some of these funds, but they're after the homeowner to replace those funds. And I don't think it's right. Again, please pass over.
Yes, sir.
I just would like to hear from the Finance Committee why they didn't recommend it.
Kevin Tom.
As many of you know, each year, the Finance Committee has worked to reduce the amount of revolving funds in separate accounts where money is placed away. So this was for us simply a matter of accounting. The less funds, the less revolving funds, the easier it grows.
Yes, sir.
I'll let that button respond to that. I'm wondering if somebody from the town is able to clarify, you know, it says that this revolving fund allows the Conservation Commission to accept funds in lieu. But how is that calculated? Is it a requirement? I just feel like more clarification on this is needed. You know, are we talking hundreds of dollars, thousands of dollars, fifty dollars?
Mr. Clemmons, can you shed some light on that?
Projects which we have managed thus far in the last few years have been on the order of like maybe a couple hundred dollars, nothing really big. We're talking about planting trees or shrubs, or things of environmental value that are not large capital items. It's simply a matter of planting small shrubs somewhere, small trees. And it's a matter of usually maybe a few hundred dollars. Unless it was a really big project, in which case the dollar amounts would be greater. But it's not all small lots, but it's simply a matter of giving conservation a tool to be able to, in a way that allows us to do the job it is wanted to do, which is to protect the environment of Hanson and to do so without always bringing a special chat task to the Select Board and allowing them to accept a gift. And then we transfer it to whatever account is appropriate for making the acquisition. We're trying to smooth out the approval process and it's usually not a great deal of money. It's simply an administrative improvement review.
Ms. Murray?
Through moderator, Mr. Clemmons. I think one thing that's being missed here is that this revolving fund allows the Conservation Commission to accept funds in lieu so that the homeowner could pay whatever the shrubs, whatever it is, and use the funds to place plants in downtown or property. So it's like swapping plants to another piece of property, correct? And this fund helps that homeowner swap those plants?
Correct, and I'll just say, and one example I'm thinking of is a number of trees needed to be cut down and we're not going to be able to be replaced on that property.
But they can be put somewhere else.
Precisely, and that was agreed to with no problem by the homeowner and the work went forward. There are places in town that need trees. We have, Camp Guaney's had to cut down a lot of trees, but who knows, they might be needing to replace some. The future hoped for, perhaps on High Street, it's going to need a lot of revegetation and we hope to achieve that in a way that doesn't become a grid. There's a lot of different places in town that would be improved by planting appropriate trees and shrubs. This would enable people who are frankly destroying such in one place to have it replaced in a fair manner, not too far away.
Any other questions or concerns? Oh, yes.
Sorry, I'm just still unclear on is this mandatory or is this voluntary? And how is that? Sorry, this may be kicking up here.
Not at all. What conservation does is it applies the laws of the state, of Commonwealth, about when there's impact to what they call a buffer zone. It's either right next to or within a certain number of feet of a wetland or other water resource area. You can't just harm those areas or impact those areas without compensating or without... We can't just allow those things to happen all the time. We are supposed to require mitigation. The first rule, and this is what we're all taught as commissioners, is avoid harming those areas. The second rule is if you can't avoid it, at least minimize the harm in doing it. The third way to do it is to mitigate, in other words, make up or balance the books, balancing the environmental books. We're required to strive for that solution in every case when we can. It's voluntary whether you bring a project to the commission and if it's not voluntary, how we enforce the state wetlands protection. I mean, we have to do what we do and this is a way to do the mitigation the act requires when projects come forward that have impacts.
Very good, any other questions or comments? The question before the meeting is whether or not we pass over Article 19. All those in favor of passing over Article 19 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The nays have it, Article 19 is not passed over. If there's no further comments, we'll move to the question. All those in favor of adopting Article 19 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, Article 19 is adopted. Article 20. I move the town vote to place the properties identified as Assessor's Map 67, Lots 15 and 15A, into the care and custody of the Conservation Commission for open space protection under Article 97 of the Massachusetts Constitution. Second, and I would note that this requires a two-thirds vote. Any questions or concerns on Article 20? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 20, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Clemmons?
It's not a question or concern, but it's just to address perhaps unspoken questions or concerns. This is a property that straddles Poor Meadow Brook or the Schumertusken River, choose your name. It's basically the footings of the old dam that were there. You can see on the old maps from 150 years ago. It's the banks of the river. It's probably less than acre overall. And it was at one time under the control, we don't know by how, the housing authority, that that control expired. It would be great housing for beavers and muskrats, but not my talents. But it's a small area, it's the banks of the river and we think it simply makes sense.
And, Mr. Clemmons, before you leave the microphone, which river is that?
In Whitman, it's called the Schumertusken River. When it crosses into Hanson and chooses the location, we call it Poor Meadow Brook. We usually say Poor Meadow Brook, it's easier.
I just wanted you to hear, I just wanted to hear you say the Indian name there. Yes, sir.
Mike Day, I could stream. I just saw that there was a Finance Committee not recommending this. As for the particular financial impact, was it a concern?
Oh, is that the wrong one?
One-on-one. Which one do you use?
Yes. We'll await you to come back. So, any other questions or concerns on Article 20? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 20 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, by the required two-thirds vote, Article 20 is adopted. Article 21. I move the town vote to place the properties identified as Assessor's Map 88, Lot 7 and 8, into the care and custody of the Conservation Commission for open space protection under Article 97 of the Massachusetts Constitution. We have a second. I would also remind you that this requires a two-thirds vote as well. Any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Mark Roboto, pine rag. Just a general question on lots, 7 and 8, are really what they comprise. And I fully apologize that I'm not taking the time to check the maps at the office, but are these the sites that the wellhead will sit on or do you see?
Mr. Clemmons?
No, these are not the lots where the new wellheads will be excited. These are lots that are joined and are along the shoreline of Old Apon. There's basically in the space defined by Old Apon, Lakeside Drive, and Alley and Becker Street and Brook Street. It's a swamp through which flows a brook, a perennial stream called Spring Brook. And so that swamp had fuel and dry spots, but not many. It was looked at, I am told, a few decades ago for development, but they found that they would have to build a bridge across the brook and it would be hugely expensive. And so nothing has been done or proposed ever since. But it's as a tributary, an area that feeds Old Apon. Old Apon is a tremendous resource, as we know, 90% in timber, 10% in Hanson. But it's important to Hanson both because of where it is and also water is diverted from that system of ponds to Silver Lake and some of us end up drinking that water. We simply think that protecting this swampy little spot with a perennial stream which is covered by the Wetlands Protection Act and the Rivers Protection Act, we think we could, if there are any future proposals, which we don't see any way anything can be approved. We would save a lot of trouble, but simply designated it as conservation land now. It's valuable for many reasons, which are documented in the explanation.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 21 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, by the required two-thirds vote, Article 21 is adopted. Article 22. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash $30,000 to replenish the Conservation Fund. Second, any questions or comments? Oh, Mr. Clemmons, go right ahead.
My last appearance, I promise. I think people may have in hand the orange handout here, which was available at the entrance to the hall tonight. And we simply wanted to explain to people why we need money in the Conservation Fund. There actually is one correction I would say up to the top. If you look at the spreadsheet on the, not the picture side, but the back side here, it talks about a balance of $18,255. We actually have commitments made already. Our conservation agent tells us that for all intents and purposes, right now, we have zero. We have spent what we have. But what we find on the Conservation Commission is we don't just say no to projects, we actually manage resource areas that are a destination. And we've all seen how during the pandemic and since then, the demand has not gone down, if anything, continues to increase. We are asked regularly, showers and all over the place, calls in the office, when we're going to get around to making a trail here or doing something else there. We are simply trying to respond to the public demand for better management and more usability, user friendliness of our conservation projects, our conservation areas. These are close to home destinations that give very low cost, healthy places for people to spend their time and we simply want to continue enhancing them. So the explanation here for what the money would be used for, we thought that would be helpful to all parties and so we provided it. And the pictures on the other side, those things have been done, but they took up the money that we had already.
Thank you very much, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 22 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Article 22 is adopted. Article 23. I move the town vote to transfer $55,000 from the sum appropriated at the October 3, 2020 special town meeting, Article 11, compactor replacement, to supplement the fiscal year 2024 budget lines 67 and 68 voted at the May 1, 2023 annual town meeting as printed in the warrant. Second, I should also note that the informational warrant listed the Finance Committee's recommendation incorrectly. It should be Finance Committee not recommended four to one. Any questions or concerns about Article 23?
So is this leftover money from the other budget, or are they not getting the compactor? I'm guessing just not understanding it. Why is it not recommended?
Ms. Green.
So the money that was approved, appropriated for the compactor, which was $55,000 at the time, actually was not enough to even cover the cost of one compactor. So the order of health had not moved forward at that point to purchase the compactor. So they're looking to reappropriate the funds to a different source.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 23 signify by, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, if you could please come to the... Okay, so the question is why the Finance Committee's vote. Mr. Sullivan.
Sure. We looked at this and we're wondering why in 2020, the town approved the expenditure of this funds, and now they're trying to be re-appropriated. The transfer station has been a perennial problem in this town that needs to be addressed. We're running into tough financial times in the spring. We can't just keep approving money. No one explained what this was for. No one explained why we didn't do get the compactor. So are we running the old compactor? Is the compactor nonexistent? It sounds like it was never purchased. But these questions never answered, and we just keep kicking this transfer station question down the road, and every time it gets a little bit more convoluted. So that's why we voted not to recommend.
Mr. Amato.
At the time when we requested these funds, we were having a hard time with contractors, and we went out to bid for new contracts for waste disposal and cycling and everything. And we suggested at the time that maybe we owned our own compactors, who would get a better deal on things. The company that we had originally, who had financial trouble. So we went out to bid, got bids on new pricing, disposal, recycling, and everything was way, way above. The company that we were with, regrouped themselves financially, and we stuck with them. So at that time, we were still getting the compactors cheaper than what we could if we bought. So the money sat in the account for a couple of years. We ended up going back to the company originally, state of the company originally had. And now we've been with them like another five or six years since this took place. This is why we're returning the money back to the general fund.
Mr. Sullivan.
So this goes back to my point, that this was, money was appropriated three years ago. And for three years, this money has sat in that account while we've argued about salaries or reducing the funding for the transfer station. So why, why is it taking three years to do it? That's, that's why we voted down. That's why I can't understand why for three years, nothing was done.
The original company we were with, the disposal company, was in receivership at the time, and we extended the contract with them a year at a time. They did regroup, and they came back with the compactors costing parental a lot cheaper than we purchased them. Even now, at this time, we're still that company years later, and the compactor's at a reduced rate still. So it doesn't make it feasible to us to try to buy compactors that have tripled in price over the last few years, if anything, like Skybuck, if you know what I'm saying.
Mr. Malisi. If he could just allow Mr. Malisi to approach.
I move to pass over Article 23.
All right, we have a motion to pass over. Mr. Young, you wish to speak to it?
I urge you not to pass over this article. I urge you to pass it. Back in May, when we did away with the enterprise account, it was partially funding this transfer station to the tune of $200,000 to $300,000 a year, and that now all goes into the general fund. Even though we're still paying for the bags and for the permits for the station, and that money's now flowing into the general fund to pay for the bills of all town departments, we were told that we were only partially funding the transfer station for the year, and we would be back in October to fund it for the rest of the year. And that's the, that's the reason this article is in there. If you vote to pass over this article, okay, now you don't, will not have the money in the article to fund the transfer station for the rest of the year. I'm sure that the, that the, some of the members of the Finance Committee are happy with this, because back in 2014, when we adopted the enterprise account, they wanted the whole town to go to curbside pickup. But we kept the transfer station open. We went to pay as you throw, and we still have it. So I urge you, I urge you not to pass over this article. Vote for the article, so everybody has an alternative of going to the transfer station. If you don't pass this article, then we're going to have to either close the transfer station some days during the week, or we're going to have to lay off employees down there. Vote no to pass over and vote for the article, please.
And Mr. Malisi, did you get a second on your motion?
Seconded.
It's seconded. Who seconded? Your name, sir?
Marcus.
Thank you. We have to keep records. Mr. Amato.
I urge you don't pass over. We're servicing your personnel, and we agree to keep things open, hold yourself.
Very good. Mr. Malisi, do you want the final word?
Yeah, so at the May Town Meeting, there were two articles. One was all the enterprise fund, one to fund the transfer station fiscal year 24. That budget was supposed to be set for all fiscal year 24, and now they're coming back in October again asking for additional funds that weren't set in fiscal, that were set at May Town Meeting. So I'm confused at like, who's making the budget for the transfer station? Why is it always off? Why is it never on point? Why do they always have to ask for money every year and not just fund it at May Town Meeting the entirety of the year?
Yes, sir.
So the language here, transfer $55,000 from the sum appropriated, seems to imply that there may be more money that was appropriated that's still sitting in an account somewhere. I'd like to know how much money was originally appropriated and...
Mr. Amato, can you answer that?
That is the original amount of money that's in that account.
So that's the total amount of money?
The total amount of that account.
Okay. So, so once this money is appropriated, the compactor replacement appropriation will have been fully depleted, and we will need to determine how to sustain this increase in salary year over year?
If, Mr. Amato.
If this is passed over, we're going to be shut. This money in the salary line to continue the transfer station rest of the year.
This year.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's why we urge you do not pass over. Please pass this and keep the transfer station going. As we know, it does run short, but certainly we have to catch up. I'll question a lot. But we did vote to fund this transfer station year 2023, so.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? We have a motion to pass over. So all those in favor of passing over Article 23 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Let me try that one more time. All those in favor of passing over Article 23 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay.
Nay.
In the chair's opinion, the nays have it. Article 23 is not passed over. We'll now proceed to adopting the article. All those in favor of adopting Article 23 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article 23 is adopted. Article 24. I move the town vote to transfer from Camp Kiwani retained earnings the amount of $50,000 to supplement Camp Kiwani salaries. Seconded, do we have any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 24 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article 24 is adopted. Article 25. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $20,000 for masonry work to replace the brickwork in the front blockway and front patio area at the library/senior center to improve safety and maintain the aesthetics of the building, and repair rear entrance walkways at the library and senior center. Seconded, any questions or concerns on Article 25? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 25 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Article 25 is adopted. Article 26. I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $19,588 from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funds for the purchase and installation of three seven-tier rotary filing cabinets and two shelving units, two shelving units with 125 shelf guides in the select board and town administrator's office. Seconded, any questions or concerns? Mr. Malisi.
I move to pass over this article, please.
Do you?
$19,000 for filing cabinets is absurd.
Seconded by Mr. Young. Any questions or comments beyond that? Ms. Green.
Unfortunately, in the municipal world, we are required by law to keep lots of paper. The cabinets that we currently have in the select board and town administrator's office are not significant to hold the amount of paper that we are required to keep. These particular type of cabinets are floor-to-ceiling cabinets in both the select board and town administrator's office. They, they have a rotary to them, so there's filing on both sides. So it's going to significantly increase the amount of storage that we have for cabinets for all of the paper. The cabinets that we currently have, also, there's no way to secure those. So all the personnel files and all our legal files are all in these cabinets. They cannot be locked, so anybody who gets into the office can help themselves with any of these files. These cabinets are also available to be locked. We also keep all of the license applications, the common viclars, the alcohol licenses, in a cabinet that cannot be locked, so anybody can help themselves to business information. This significantly increases the cabinet space in our office, so we don't have to keep them in boxes, and it also allows us to secure these at night, so people can't get access to these files.
Any other questions or concerns? Yes, Mr. Young.
Can anybody, can somebody please explain how these cabinets fall under the American Rescue Plan Act? I read the Rescue Plan Act on, online, and what the restrictions after that. And I couldn't see where file cabinets for a selectance office would, would come under the, come under that, because it's not, it's not a capital expense. It doesn't qualify as a capital expense.
Mr. Sheriff, this is our town accountant.
Hi, Eric, Chief of Town Accountant. Okay, the American Rescue Plan has certain categories of expenditures.
Right.
And one of those expenses is called revenue replacement, and that's the money that the town receives directly. And the revenue replacement category can be spent for any governmental purpose, with the exception of debt or paying down your OPEB or reserves or something. So it is an op-eligible expense.
I understand revenue, through you, Mr. Moderator, I understand revenue replacement, but revenue replacement deals with funds that are lost because of COVID. Where did the town lose any revenue or funds due to the COVID epidemic? If you can explain that, then maybe I'll...
Sure. That, the category says revenue replacement, but the guidelines don't require you to prove that it loses revenue. The guidelines just say, that's just the way it is, that's the, that's the way the law is. I've done op- reviews probably for other towns, too. It is, it's an eligible expense for op.
But you understand what I'm saying?
I, I do. But the, the name of it, yeah, but you don't need to prove that it's a revenue replacement.
So it's there, and it says that, but you don't need to prove it?
Correct.
Sure, okay.
Well, Mr. Young, you wouldn't be the first person to identify a federal law difficult to read. Oh, it's easy to read, but not easy to understand. Very good. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 26 signify by saying aye. Oh, I'm sorry. We had a motion to pass over that, correct. So, the first question is, shall we pass over Article 26? All those in favor of passing over Article 26 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay.
Nay.
The nays have it. Article 26 is still before the meeting. All those in favor of adopting Article 26 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article 26 is adopted. Article 27. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $76,000 for storm water management and MS4 permit-related items. Seconded, any questions or comments about Article 27? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 27 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Article 27 is adopted. Article 28. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $10,500 for the purchase of an 18, I'm sorry, for the purchase of a 48-inch, 22-horsepower, commercial scag-zero-turn mower. Seconded. I think that's the first time I've ever said scag-zero.
That's your online name.
Any questions or comments about Article 28? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 28 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Article 28 is adopted. Article 29. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $110,000 to provide funding for the roadway surface crack ceiling of Route 58 from the Halifax Town Line to the Whitman Town Line. Seconded. Yes, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Moderator, Joe Campbell, Woodbine half. I was hoping somebody was here from Highway. Jameson's here. Down at Precinct 3, Selco, a few years back, had done a horrible job patching 58 all the way from Halifax to the 58-27 intersection. Why are we not holding them accountable for the failure of their patchwork?
I'll recognize the highway supervisor, although it is a bit of field from this question, but please. Oh, can we have this microphone up?
Jameson Shave, Highway Director. That work was done way before my tenure. There is a lot of cracking on that road. It would be well-served, the crack ceiling before it fails. It's going to be about a $7.5 million road, which equates to about 21 years' worth of funding that the town currently provides for the roadway. So by extending the life of it, you're going to be putting $7.5 million in the background, hopefully, a period of time before the road starts to fail. So I figure it'd be money well-spent to do our preservation instead of just, you know, probably constant repairs.
And as to your other question, that might be a question for another forum.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor... Thank you. All those in favor of Article 29 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Article 29 is adopted. Article 30. I move the town vote to accept Gray Lane, Stringer Lane, and Alden Ways, public ways, and further to approve Article 30 as printed in the warrant. Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 30 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 30 is adopted. Article 31. Oh. Sorry. Let me take that vote again. I had intended to tell the meeting that that had to be approved by a two-thirds vote, and I failed to do so. So all those in favor of Article 30 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by a two-thirds vote, Article 30 is adopted. Article 31. I move the town vote to accept Litchfield Lane and Proudfoot Way as public ways, and further to approve Article 31, as printed in the warrant. Second, this also requires a two-thirds vote. So all those in favor, oh, any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 31 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by the required two-thirds vote. Do we have a motion on Article 32? We have a motion to pass over Article 32? Seconded. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to comment on Article 32, Mr. Moderator, Marjorie Bulger, 25th Avenue. Article 32 addresses a citizen's petition that was started before Article 31 was placed as warrant to be heard. So in support of the motion to pass over Article 32, because it's moved based on Article 31, it deals substantively with the same street.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments on the motion to pass over Article 32? Seeing none, all those in favor of passing over Article 32 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 32 is passed over. And that concludes our business for the night. Thank you so much for hanging in there. I now adjourn, sign, go.